Hello and welcome to Public Policy Review. I'm Leonard Zane, and we are joined here today with five out of six of the candidates for Arcadia City Council. One candidate is not here today, that's Mr. Bob Harbick, but he is sending information that will be read about him, and in response to questions, he is sending written answers. But the people here in studio with us today are candidates, first of all, Dr. Sheng Chang and Mr. Paul Van Fleet, Ms. April Verlato, Mr. Burton Brink, and Mr. Peter Amundson. And we will eventually include all of you in questions that will be posed to each of you, and then each of you will answer. We will rotate who answers first. So to begin with, I'm going to read some short biographies on these individuals. Peter Amundson was born and raised in Arcadia and never left. He graduated from UCLA with a degree in political science specializing in state and local government. Peter got involved in the community-supporting youth programs. There were years he volunteered over 500 hours. Peter is married and raised his three children in Arcadia with his wife of 27 years. Peter is the CEO of a local transportation company that provides employment for almost 80 people. Peter served two terms on the city council, starting in 2006. During his time as mayor, much of his focus was on revitalizing downtown Arcadia, and he still serves on the Arcadia Downtown Improvement District. Mike Antonovich appointed Peter to the Los Angeles County Aviation Commission. Peter is proud of his heritage and is a member of Sons of Norway. Welcome, Peter. And the next individual joining us, who is campaigning for Arcadia City Council, is Mr. Burton Brink, who grew up and attended Arcadia schools, graduating from Arcadia High School in 1982. Mr. Brink's family has resided in Arcadia for over 49 years, and he is married with four children. Burton Brink is currently a sergeant assigned to the Executive Division of the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, located at the Hall of Justice in downtown Los Angeles. He is a member of the Arcadia Elks Lodge and the Arcadia Chamber of Commerce. He serves on the Board of Directors for the Professional Peace Officer Association of Los Angeles County and charitable foundation. Mr. Brink's knowledge and experience with city governments prompts his desire to serve the city of Arcadia. And next to Mr. Brink is April Verlato. April Verlato was born and raised in Arcadia and currently resides in the Highlands with her husband and two children. Her parents still live in the home in which she was raised, and her mother-in-law lives in South Arcadia. A graduate of UCLA and the Southwestern School of Law, April took over her father's legal practice in 2000 and is a practicing attorney in downtown Arcadia. April Verlato is president of the Arcadia Improvement Association and led the committee that brought in a street market to downtown Arcadia in 2015. Since 2014, she has chaired the Highlands Homeowners Association and formed and led Saving Arcadia, the ballot initiative sponsored for limiting the size of new homes in Arcadia. For the past six years, April has taken actions to support the Arcadia general plan, including co-forming a downtown business group to help establish Arcadia's new Gold Line Station. Next to April Verlato is Paul Van Fleet. Paul Van Fleet is a 17-year resident of Arcadia. He holds Bachelor of Arts degrees in both economics and geography from Rutgers University. Mr. Van Fleet's career experience spans a wide range of industries. In his adulthood, he has also enjoyed broad cultural exposure by living in other areas in America, as well as in Taichung City, Taiwan. Next to Mr. Van Fleet is Dr. Sheng Chang. Sheng Chang, M.D., has lived in Arcadia since 1979. All his children have graduated from Arcadia public schools. Dr. Chang has served two terms on the Arcadia City Council from 1994 to 1998 and 2000 through 2004. He also is one of the centennial mayors. Sheng Chang is again running for Arcadia City Council, especially because of his concerns about community safety and mansionization. His concerns focus primarily on zoning, establishment of floor area ratios, and related property rights and values. And finally, we have a background on the one candidate who is not present in studio, but whose biography will be presented here, and whose written answers will be also read in response to questions to be asked. And that is Mr. Bob Harbick. Bob Harbick has served 20 years on the Arcadia City Council, longer than anyone in the 112-year history of the city. Because of the city's term limits rule, his 20 years have been spread over a 30-year period. He left the council 18 months ago because of again reaching his term limits and is very concerned at what has happened in Arcadia since he has been off the council. Highlights of Mr. Harbick's background include several terms as Arcadia mayor, Duarte mayor, 2015 Citizen of the Year with his wife Patsy, president of the Arcadia Rotary Club and its educational foundation, chairman of the Baldwin Nine Cities District of the Boy Scouts of America, president of the Arcadia High School Drill Team Booster Club, board member of the Arcadia Public Library Foundation, founder and 30-year president of Harbick Research, a profitable and nationally-known marketing research consulting firm. Now, gentlemen and lady, we are going to pose five questions to you all, and you have received these questions in advance, so you had time to think about them, so we could get nice, thoughtful, succinct answers, and hopefully, direct ones that are specific, that can inform the public as to your various positions on these issues. So I will pose the questions one at a time, and then we will start with the first respondent will be Mr. Amundson. I'll pose question one, and then we'll just go right down the line here, and then I'll just keep rotating as we go down with the rest of the questions. There are five questions. So to begin with question one. According to CLR research, in 2012, the Arcadia robbery risk index was 30 points higher than the California average and 34 points higher than the national average. What city actions would you advocate taking about this alarming violent crime hazard?
Well, you can't take one action, it has to be a combination. So I think there's a, I call my three-pronged attack for reducing crime in the city of Arcadia. First of all, it has to start with the individual. The individual has to work to make themselves so they're less or a smaller target. Simple things, the chief has said, like dog ownership and home security systems, motion detection likes, things like that. Make it so that you're not as big as target. Second part is that our neighborhoods need to look out for each other. They need to, you know, watch for suspicious activity, and don't be afraid to call. You know, I've heard the police say it numerous times, they'd rather have a false alarm, a false call, than to have a burglary or a crime go unreported. You know, often they'll call their best friend instead of calling 911 or calling the police department, so, and that's the second one. The third is, I think we're understaffed with our police, and I think we should use those additional officers to do select enforcement. There are certain patterns that the crimes are having, certain days, times, and even seems like they're selecting locations at times. So I think we should put some additional patrols in those areas where we can kind of predict that they're going to happen. So it starts with the individual, spreads out to the community and citywide with our police.
Thank you, Mr. Amundson, and Mr. Brink.
Yes. The, as a resident, you have to keep your eyes open because you know best what is in the area. You know who belongs and who doesn't belong. So one of the things you need to do is make sure that when you see someone that doesn't belong in the area, that you call the police department and tell them what you are seeing. It's that see something, say something campaign. One of the other things you do as a resident is be careful of what you post on social media. Social media is where a lot of the criminals will get their information in regards to you being out of town or being out of the country, and they know that your house is now vacant and you can become a victim. Other things that you can do is lighting for your house. My house is lit up like Fort Knox at night, because the bad guys do not want to have lights. They want to work in darkness, especially at nighttime. A lot of burglaries happen during the day, but you can get other things that are happening when you're gone at night, so hence why you need to have some lighting around your house. I also have security cameras that cover my entire property, so that way I know when somebody is coming and going. Goes along with my alarm system, and of course, my neighbors all keep in contact with me. The other thing is, is we have to make sure our police have all the equipment that they need. They have to be able to go out and use the information that you give them with the phone calls to go and find out what's going on with somebody suspicious in the area. Once that you've got that taken care of, then the suspects can be arrested. And then, thirdly, just continue to be relevant and in our community and make sure that you pay attention to what is going on around you.
Thank you, Mr. Brink. At this point, I'm going to insert the answer by Mr. Bob Harbick. The question assumes facts, not in evidence. I also resent the term alarming violent crime hazard. The statistics are at least three years old. Also, with one exception, they show that the Arcadians are far, far less likely to experience violent crime than others in the United States or in California. Arcadia is a very safe city, one of the safest in the San Gabriel Valley. Our fire chief has never asked for council members' advice on how to put out fires. By the same token, the police chief doesn't ask us for our advice on fighting crime. These are trained professionals in their field, and I rely on their expertise. The council's role is to see that the safety departments have the equipment and manpower they need to keep our community safe. I'm very proud that both the Arcadia Police Officers Association and the Arcadia Firefighters Association have endorsed me in this election. They have said very clearly that I'm the person they want to work with for the next four years to keep our community safe. And Ms. Verlato, we now turn to you.
Wow. So, public safety is a priority. It's one of my number-one concerns if I was to serve on city council. The reputation of our city in public safety really does affect property values. It's something that we don't want to be known as an area that has a lot of crime. We have seen a significant increase in residential burglaries, and I'm surprised that Mr. Harbick gives a response that we're safe. So, you know, I find it, I find it alarming that he doesn't find it alarming. But I think that the city council's role is to work with the police department, to work with the police chief, to find out what we can do to try to combat any increase, any type of crime that happens in Arcadia. We want to work and make our best effort and do what we can to prevent those kinds of crimes, because I don't think the people who are the victims of these crimes want to hear that they need to do more or that there's no problem with crime. So for me, it would be encouraging the police department to increase patrols, perhaps hiring more police, and perhaps outreach to our community, teaching them what they can do to not be a victim of crime. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Verlato. Mr. Van Fleet?
Well, I agree a little bit with Bob. The sky is not falling on everything. However, one crime is too much. To be invaded in your home, whether you're there or not, is a terrible experience, and people, nobody wants to go through that. I wish everybody was as thorough as Mr. Brink here. I think that we should have video cameras out there and point one at your neighbor's driveway. Maybe a strange car will park there, too. The lighting, police can't be there all the time. The lighting is excellent. Light your house up, it's a cheap way to protect your property. A lot of the burglaries are because of there's a lot of vacant houses, people who've invested in property. Having a dog in a vacant property obviously won't help, but if you do have a, if you're living there, definitely get a dog if you can. They do discourage people. Criminals want an easy target. If you make yourself a hard target, they're not going to go to somebody else, they're going to go to somebody else. The other thing, as a city council, we can encourage things like block parties where people, neighbors, get to know each other, and we can get, maybe, I've seen a lot of the signs that this neighborhood is protected, they have a neighborhood watch, we should encourage that, and help them organize neighborhood watches. And like, we should have as many resources as they do need to protect the people of Arcadia, we should find the money for it. No one should feel unsafe or uncomfortable in their house. And like I said, we're very blessed that a lot of the other crimes are much less. And fortunately, this is something that we do have ability to get this crime break down by providing certain techniques as far as more patrols, neighborhood watch, neighborhood block parties, get to know your neighbor, see something, say something.
Thank you, Mr. Van Fleet. Dr. Chang?
Yes. I don't know why we have a higher robbery rate than the other cities in California or even nationally, but I guess it's related to a higher economic status of the resident, especially the Asian new immigrants. But the statistics, they show that, so we have to deal with that, we have to take care of this problem. I think it's right that the individual, the resident, should do something themselves. Most important is that they shouldn't be very careful, especially when driving home. A lot of times, the robbery happened when the driver just stepped down from the car at the home, and the robber just get them right away. So they have to be very careful. And also, it's important that they have the camera, the alarm system, and they should also, if possible, raise a dog, you know. I heard that the alarm system and the dog are too deterrent for the robbery or thefts. Of course, safety is the responsibility of the city hall, especially the police department. I believe that they should, with this existing data, they should increase their police staff, probably one to two, or even more. They should patrol the city day and night. They should also consider hiring bilingual staff so that that would facilitate the communication between the immigrant and the city hall. And of course, they should expand the neighborhood watch program so that make this communication more effective. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chang. And now we'll proceed to question two. Contract negotiations are up in 18 months for all city employees. Do you support or oppose raises for city employees, and why?
Well, the city employees got a raise on the last negotiation, and obviously, in 18 months, we don't know where we're going to stand in 18 months. We don't know if the user tax has been repealed, and if it is, then that removes already $7 million off the budget, and then on top of that, doing negotiations, we're already going to be laying off police officers, firefighters, and other city services. So it's really hard to explain, to confirm if we're going to give any raises or anything at that point. A lot of it in 18 months can change with what's going to be happening with our economy, and of course, still with that utility tax, and if we still have that. So that's, I'm unable to answer that question because we don't know where we're going to be at that time.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brink. Proceeding now with Mr. Harbick's answers. Most of our employees have gone without salary increases for several years. The pay raises in the current contract were offset by increases the employees paid into PERS, P-E-R-S, reducing the city's contribution. Thus, they broke even over the four years of the contract. During the recession, our employees were very cooperative in their negotiations. Now that the economy is improving, it is likely that they will see pay increases. The amount of the increases will be subject to negotiation as usual. I am not at liberty to say what the amounts might be. We have negotiators for that. The council meets in closed session with our negotiators, so I'm not about to tip our hand in that area. Ms. Verlato?
Well, I would say that I agree more with Burton about, you know, who knows where we're going to be in 18 months with our budget, with the economy, and you really do have to go in with a poker face and not, like Mr. Harbick says, tip your hand, but I think he is tipping his hand when he says that they've gone without raises and they should be getting raises. So I would think that the residents of Arcadia should elect somebody who's going to have a backbone, and I would say that I'm that candidate. I'm not going to just give away taxpayers' money because employees ask for a raise, and it depends on so many different factors when you do negotiations with employees. You don't go in already with setup to give them raises.
Thank you, Ms. Verlato. Mr. Van Fleet?
Well, we have a couple good answers here, a little hybrid between these two. One, we have no idea what this economy is going to be like in 18 months. Arcadia is a little bit of a bubble, too. I think we haven't really even seen what the recession was with the rest of this country. A lot of it was postponed or totally didn't happen in Arcadia because of the influx of money from Asia. I think that we, I've heard rumors that that is drying up. When that dries up, are we still going to be doing as well as we are? We don't know. The American economy is on a bubble. We don't know if it's going to be good or bad, so we really can't promise anything or say, no, you're not going to get a raise, yes, you are going to get a raise. We can't promise anything. In 18 months, we could be in prosperity or we could be in recession, unfortunately. As far as tipping your hand, I think that people that do an excellent job, we might have to give money, additional money to keep them, we might lose other people. It's a hard, with budgeting, I'm not, like I said, this young lady said, I'm not going to spend any of your tax dollars that if I was my own money, I wouldn't spend on myself. I think we have to be very, very frugal with our tax dollars. I think that we don't want to put any more taxes on our people, but we do have to have a rainy day fund in case there's emergencies like that large windstorm, or we have problems with any of our utilities, as far as sewers or water. We need to have money on the side, that we could, if something comes up, that we have a little bit of a fund, that we can handle that. But as far as promising raises or saying no, at this time, it would be imprudent to see either one. We don't know. We don't know if the money's going to be there, we don't know if it's going to be there or not.
Thank you, Mr. Van Fleet, and Dr. Chang.
Yeah, it's 18 months from now, I think it's still too far, and I would not make a decision right now. But I do want to point out that, number one, I went to a city council meeting last night, and a lot of people went up and talked, and they indicated that the city employees are all well-paid. So I just want to be very careful when we consider raising their money. And the other thing is that we may deal with different groups with different rate. One more thing is that we are going, the city is going to raise the water fees from 1.7 on every year, January of 17, on every year. So that should cover the employee, the employee of this particular department well. So when we go back and talk to them about their rate raise, I think we should take this into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chang. Ms. Amundson?
I've had the privilege to work with the great city staff for eight years on the council, and I appreciate our staff, we do have a great staff. And as a business owner, I know that compensation is not the only way to show that you appreciate staff. And we do, there are ways to show that we do appreciate the staff that we have, but you know, as it, yesterday was a business conference, and there's question whether we are currently heading back into another recession. And you know, I've always tried to use the city council, the city's money, as if it was my own, because it's not, I shouldn't say the city, it's the taxpayer's money as is my own, and use it wisely. So 18 months out, it's hard to say, we've always treated the staff fair or more than fair, and I think we will do so in the future, but at this point, 18 months out, it would be irresponsible to say so. And you know, that's what negotiations are for. Even if I did have an opinion, it would be really not right for me to say it here, because then I would be tipping my hand, you know, and so we'll be fair, we've been fair, we have a great staff, we'll be fair with them. But you know, a lot of this also does depend on what happens. If they repeal the utility users' tax, then it's a whole new ballgame.
Thank you, Ms. Amundson. And now with the next question, and the first respondent to the next question will be the reading of Bob Harbick's answer. And the third question is, for five entire blocks of First Avenue, from Huntington Drive South to Eldorado Street, there are 12 nail and beauty salons and seven vacant storefronts, but there are no major restaurants or leading retail goods stores other than a music store and a bookstore. Do you think First Avenue could become an Arcadia Village comparable to Myrtle Avenue in Monrovia? If so, what actions would you lead and support to help create an Arcadia Village that would enhance the community and raise city revenues? And to that, Mr. Harbick replied. The question seems to be very Monrovia-centric. It assumes that we aspire to be Monrovia. This is comparable to me asking, do you think Monrovia will ever have a Westfield Shopping Mall? With regard to First Avenue, when I was on the city council, the city financed the establishment of a business improvement district. I had hopes for that because it was to be an effort of the business people, not government. We are awaiting the outcome of that effort. Here in America, we have the free enterprise system. Government's role is to create an atmosphere which attracts businesses and allows them to thrive. Success or failure is up to their efforts. Arcadia businesses are thriving for the most part. They generate over $10 million in annual sales tax revenue. Compare that to anyone's beloved Monrovia. Dr. Chang?
Yeah, this is related to First Avenue. This is the only downtown that has not been successful. I think we should look to this downtown in the Bowing and the Waltham section. That's the most successful downtown area of Arcadia, other than the Westfield Shopping Mall. Why it's become so successful? Because it has the shopping center. It's all business, all concentrated, all concentrated in the shopping mall. Because when you drive there, you come down, you saw a lot of shops right away, you have an ample parking lot there, too. So, but for First Avenue, you park one place, you come down, you don't know where else you are going to. So it's, I don't know how to develop that, but we can increase the parking, try to increase the parking space, and also try to see whether we can attract a big restaurant over there. But talking about government help, I think government should help them in terms of encouraging them. For example, government can help them remodel the shops, build the facade, maybe waive the application license fee. I think we, if we want them to come, we should help them successfully. Not just come and then you live or die yourself, that's not responsible. That's not interference either, that's a helpful hand to the business, that would help the business. Thank you.
Mr. Van Fleet?
I think the First Avenue, there are a few issues there. Redevelopment of First Avenue, one is parking. The other, if you don't have ample parking, people do not want to go to an area. We say, yeah, we like to walk, but you don't walk that far, especially in the summer. The other thing that would be is, do we want to be in a Monrovia? No, of course not. We have an Arcadia, we can have our own Arcadia-type style, but we do have to get the people together in the neighborhood, all the neighborhood shop owners together, and make a decision on what type of area they want to develop, because they're going to be, people in effect are going to be carrying most of the load of the expense. Our fine doctor here also brought up a point about, we do need an anchor store. If you put a grocery store there, or you put a nice anchor store there, you're going to develop business because you have to have some, these ancillary businesses will be greatly enhanced by a large anchor store. And any of the locations we see in Arcadia that are doing well do have an anchor, a grocery store. And any of the locations we see in Arcadia that are doing well do have a grocery store or a large shopping mall in their area. Permit process to help them, cut the licensing fees, cut the permit process down, make it very, very simple, have a person there dedicated to that, that's a yes person. Yes, this is how we can get it done. We'll get it done correctly, but yes, we won't make it difficult for you to improve the area. And a gentleman, like this gentleman said, a little government assistance, just don't leave them there hanging, maybe some advice from our people that have worked on other projects. But I think that's what we could handle, our First Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Van Vliet. Now, Ms. Robinson.
Thank you very much. I had the privilege of being on the council during when we had the discussion of Mr. Caruso's discussion of the shops at San Anita. And I came away with that with a very clear consensus that the people of Arcadia want, they wanted a downtown. Not necessarily Myrtle Avenue, but something a little more, a little more Arcadian. You know, we have, you know, about five different business areas, and you cannot afford to do all at one time. You have to kind of do one at a time and knock them off. And so when I was mayor, I chose my, put my, the power of the mayorship behind creating the Arcadia Downtown. And, you know, Arcadia, as Mr. Harbick did talk to, the council decided, "We want to be led by the people who have businesses there, but we're going to prime the pump." And we spent money for consultants to help decide what actually would go there and help us set up the downtown board and what kind of business. We did parking studies. So see, the Arcadia's invested hundreds of thousands of dollars into the downtown. And, you know, but we don't just walk away. We, there's great potential there. The Gold Line Station is opening up, and I think we're one of the few downtowns that has a Gold Line Station right in downtown. And I see the Gold Line Station not only as a great multiplier for the Arcadia Downtown, but also for Arcadia in general. So, you know, yes, Arcadia's do want a downtown, and I think we're going to get there. We're on the road there.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. And now, Mr. Brink.
Thank you. Arcadia's downtown, First Avenue, is nothing like Myrtle Avenue. They're totally different types of streets. So, no, we're not going to be anything like Monrovia. However, you know, we have a great little area that would be great to be able to walk around with your family and see some shops. It's hard to do that with all you have is nail shops and noodle houses and those type of things. So as a city council member, what can you do? Well, as a council member, we are in the process of doing a rezoning for our commercial area. We have some very strict guidelines when it comes down to some of the commercial areas. And I've actually had a friend who had a business on First Avenue that had to move out and move down to another area out of Arcadia because of the restrictions that the rezoning had, or the zoning had. So we need to loosen up our zonings. We need to make sure that our community has the small businesses in the area. Small businesses is what makes America great, and I think that is what we need to do, is to have some good small businesses that will bring families down to this downtown area. We have the Gold Line that will be dropping people off. We have some great businesses like Matt Denny's down there that, here are small businesses, not name brands, that people, that are unique enough for people to come to and they can walk to once they get off the train. Those are things we need to concentrate on, as well as parking situations. We need to make sure that we've got plenty of parking for everybody, adding parking structure or whatever it is that we need to do to make sure that we have parking so people can just park in the one spot and walk our little downtown area. We will never be Monrovia. It's not a major street like Myrtle Avenue is in Monrovia. However, we have a very unique area there that can be a very quaint and nice downtown area for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brink. And now, Ms. Verlato.
Thank you. I've spent the last five and a half years trying to figure out what we can do to revitalize our downtown Arcadia district and prepare it for the opening of the Gold Line. And what we found through meeting with city leaders from Monrovia to Pasadena is three things. Number one, parking. Number two, zoning. And number three, promotion. I'm part of the committee or the board, the Downtown Arcadia Improvement Association, that's that third part, promotion. And we've been working hard through social media, print media, everything we can think of to promote our businesses in downtown Arcadia, bringing in a street market to draw attention, to make it a family fun area to come to and get people introduced to the idea of walking up and down the streets of First Avenue. It's part of the city's responsibility to help us get the zoning done. Only the city can do the zoning, and we need the right zoning. Our Downtown Improvement Association Board came up with recommendations, and we're still waiting for our city council to adopt those recommendations to try to help us with our zoning, to help us attract new businesses that will attract pedestrians. And our third prong to this, parking. We need more parking. First Avenue has no parking below Huntington Drive. That is what we found out from the parking study. Even though there's plenty of parking north of Huntington, it's not sufficient to help with south of Huntington Drive. So the city needs to help figure out some way to increase the amount of parking there is for those businesses below Huntington Drive.
Thank you, Ms. Verlato. And now, we'll move on to question four, which is, "Should Arcadia adopt a FAR floor-area ratio requirement for new residences? And what about the zoning review committee's current zoning proposals?" Dr. Chang.
It's a somewhat controversial issue, even though it may be needed. FAR is floor area ratio. This is different from lot coverage. For lot coverage, you cover, you have a building that occupies a lot area, but it doesn't concern about how big is the building. For floor area ratio, it concerns about how big is the building. Okay? So floor area ratio affects the value of the property. So when we consider FAR, we should consider also the resultant effect on the property value. So I call it, you know, FAR, the balance between FAR and the property value. Now, there's another thing here is that the compatibility of the neighborhood, okay? This is called the community sense versus the property right, how compatible the property owner should be with his neighbors. So we should have a balance between the compatibility and the property right. Okay? But I, in making all this work, I would consider that when you build a new house, you should ask your neighbor's opinion and try to incorporate into your design so that the whole street is compatible. Now, for this, for the area with HOA, ARB, it works fine because ARB does all the work. But for South Side, where there is no ARB, HOA, I think the city has been doing a relatively good job, although people would not agree with some of the city council's decision. But in summary, I think we should consider the community sense, compatibility, the property value, and property rights all together. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chang. And now, Ms. Robinson.
When I was in the city council, the number one issue, like people came to me, the community says, "You know, I lost my privacy. I've lost my quality of life," because a big house would go up, a big oversized house would come up next door. So I think Arcadia, I think knee is long overdue for FAR. People say it's, this issue is, it should have happened 10 years ago, but I'm thankful that it's heading in the right direction. The first question a developer asks should not be, "What, how big a building can I build?" But what fits that lot? What fits that community? And I think the FAR is a good step, because I've had people tell me, staff members tell me, it makes them use the square footage more wisely. And the, and so you get a better building. Now, I, you know, I've been to numerous, numerous hearings or public sessions over the last two or three years, the last couple, two years. And I think that there is reasonable minds on both sides. I don't think you should have to give up your property value or vice versa, give up your privacy or quality of life to preserve your property value. I think you can have both. You can have, you can have all of the above. And I think the, there's reasonable minds on both sides, and I think the zoning commission has come with a solution that I think is good for Arcadia. So yes, I do support the decision from the Arcadia Residential Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. And now, I will read the response by Bob Harbick. "I support fine-tuning the R1 zoning ordinance, but it needs to be done with a scalpel, not a meat axe. A floor-area ratio is probably in our future, but as with most things, the devil's in the details. What should be included and excluded in the calculation of floor area is critical. For most people in Arcadia, their home is their single biggest asset. To enact legislation without considering impact on property values borders on the criminal. This is something that needs to be done with very careful study and the consideration of all impacts, both intended and unintended. The zoning committee worked very hard and did a commendable job, but I would not vote for their proposal as submitted. There are a number of unintended consequences to their recommendations, and every recommendation needs to be carefully studied. I think they provided a good springboard for further discussion." Mr. Brink.
Arcadia's been without a FAR forever. It's one of the few cities that has never had a FAR or does not have a FAR. All of our communities in the area have a FAR. So yes, it's time to have a FAR. Problem is with this rezoning, that is, the R1 rezoning that was done by the commission, is it's not looking at everything that's in effect for every area. What I mean by that is, there's a non-HOA area, it's in the north end of Arcadia, above Orange Grove Avenue. And in this area, it is on slopes, everybody's property is not level as we go up the hill towards Chantry Flats, up into the mountains. And they have the FAR on there as 35 to 45 percent. And that is too big. That is great for a flatland area, but not when you have homes that are offset. So that would be one of the recommendations that I would make that would be brought down to what the Highlands area has, that would be more in touch with what the non-HOA area above Orange Grove is. It matches that type of area. The other thing you got to be conscious of is I've been into homes down in, you know, on Camino Real that they just finished building. Up to a 9,000-square-foot house I went into is one of the houses I've been to. And in that house, I can see five houses next door. I can see into their backyards without any problem, especially three homes that were right next door. So there's a big privacy issue when you're, when you have such a large home in these properties. So that's something that also needs to be worked at. You have to have something that matches the area. You have to work with your neighbors. It has to be harmonious. We have to make sure that we all live together, talk to each other, and make it work. I am for rezoning. I am for a sliding FAR. But yes, we do need to do some, a little adjusting to it before we continue on with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brink. Ms. Verlato.
People buy homes because of the amenities being offered, such as excellent schools, low crime rate, parks, close to shopping. Those are the attributes that draw and attract buyers, not how big can I build on this lot. A FAR is not going to devastate real estate property values in Arcadia. There may be some shock factor when developers can no longer build what they want to build, but a FAR is not going to eliminate development in Arcadia. A reasonable FAR is going to promote harmonious and compatible housing development that will attract new and, new residents who want to participate and be involved in the community. The FAR proposed by the zoning review committee was hammered out, not only with just citizens and residents of Arcadia, but developers and designers who know and understand the market. And it was carefully considered what the FAR would do to property values when they came up with their recommendations. And it was, it was believed that the proposed FAR would not adversely impact property values to the point where it wasn't something that could be absorbed by the real estate market. So I don't think that there needs to be as much tweaking as some of the other people think. But I was on the zoning review committee, and I know what we went into it, and I know that it is a good recommendation. It's a good start for Arcadia. And I'd like to see that it get adopted, and there might be areas that need to be readjusted with, but I think we can take the time to see how the FAR impacts them.
All right. Mr. Van Vliet.
The FAR. I'm probably one of the only people here that doesn't own a home. I hope to own a home one of these days here, but you guys are doing such a good job having the community so lovely that they're unaffordable for most of us here. Sliding scale, they have, you have to have, you can't have anything set in stone. It has to be able to be massaged. Like Mr. Brink said, you have areas in this city. If you were in downtown Iowa City, where everything is flat, everything could be done exactly the same. You have to have provisions for people to be able to work around it. For example, would anybody here have a problem with, if you had a piece of property facing the freeway, being able to build a two-story garage unit-type thing to block freeway noise, where in most cases, you would not want that there, because it would ruin people's views? It can't be set in stone. It has to be massaged. We got, we have to be able that if people have odd types of property or property with certain disadvantages, that there can be uses for it, that they just don't lose their whole investment in the property or everything they worked for their whole lives. And there are very, a lot of houses that are very beautiful, very beautiful areas. There are houses that, I don't know if we want to replicate them either. I think that some of these new houses are very, very beautiful. They are oversized, and when they take people's privacy away, I think that's a huge problem. But people say, "Oh, I want everything to look the same." Like Irvine? I don't think so. Where you have a situation where you want to change the color of your door and you get a ticket? I think part of Arcadia is we're individuals. We like to be able to, we're individuals. We like to be able to have our own type of style. And if it's a reasonable style and it fits in the neighborhoods, we should be able to do it. As far as the FAR is concerned, if it's massageable and we're able to do adjustments to work around certain issues, I would agree with it being in place.
Thank you, Mr. Van Vliet. All right, now, and for our fifth and final question, "What advantages would you bring for helping run Arcadia in a commendably businesslike way?"
I own my own business, and I know what it's like to run a business. And you have to make the tough choices. You have to do your research and your homework. And you don't just go along to get along. And that's what you can expect from me as a city councilperson.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Van Vliet.
Some people would call me frugal. I'm pretty tight with a dollar, and I'll be tight with your tax dollars, too. I think that if something needs to be done, we should pay a fair price for it. Very hard negotiations as far as with suppliers and vendors, fair but firm. And I think that your tax dollar, your dollar in your pocket is much better than me taking it as a tax dollar. So I think we need to be very, a sharpened pencil, look at the budget, and if it's absolutely necessary to improve the life in Arcadia or keep our lifestyle the way it is, then I would do it. If it's something that's not necessary or just frivolous, that's just a waste of money, I'm not going to do it. I'm going to make sure it goes back to your, the general fund, so that when we have an emergency, we have the money on hand. One of the things I do think we should look into, though, is our senior program. One of the things I do think we should look into, though, is our senior programs and like that. I think that a lot of people are talking about, when you look at, if, God forbid, this motion for Measure A gets repealed, that we're going to lose all that money, that they're talking, the first thing is cutting the seniors and the children's programs. I think that should be, other than safety and fire, I think that's the, two of the last programs we should be cutting.
Thank you, Mr. Van Fleet. And now, I'm going to read the response from Mr. Bob Harvick. "Arcadia is right now, and has been for some time, arguably the best-run city in California, and I'm proud of the role I've played in that for many years. My business experience is extensive. I became vice president of the largest marketing research consulting firm west of Chicago in my 20s and served on the three-man executive committee that ran the company. In my 30s, I left to found Harvick Research Incorporated, which became a nationally-known marketing research consulting firm, serving such clients as Toyota, Heinz, Bank of America, Coors, and many, many others. I was president of the company for 32 years. I've dealt with making a payroll, generating business, dealing with personnel, and all the other ins and outs of running a successful business. I bring that real-world experience to the city council." Dr. Chang.
I think Mr. Harvick is just talking about his experience. I didn't hear anything about how he would run the city and the business. Okay, he just mentioned that he can write a payroll. That's, that's, a simple clerk can do that. I, the way I want to run the city, like a business, with the following. Number one, there's no wasting, okay? I want to be, to have a balanced budget. How much you get in should be calculated against how much you will pay out. And I want to make sure that the customer is always right. That means the citizen is always to be concerned. Whatever they say, you should take into serious consideration. Number three, the city should have accountability. Whatever you say, it should be, it should be done, it should be, you should account for whatever you promise. Number four, the city should run effectively. That means when you are, whenever you pull out a policy, it should be done, it should be done. It's not just an empty policy. Number five, you should be efficient. Not only you should, you should perform your policy, but also you perform it effectively in terms of time factor. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chang. Mr. Robinson.
Thank you, sir. What advantages do I have in business? I've spent 31 years owning my own company, president of my own company. And, you know, the motto of my company is refrigerated service with integrity. Service with integrity is something to me, not only as a business, it's more than just a motto, it's a way of living, and something I plan to bring, I bring with me to City Hall. You know, I also bring businesslike fiscal conservatism to the, you know, I watch every dollar. I have, you know, not I'm going to, I have. I've been there when I've asked staff the tough questions. They know, they be prepared, you know, is this the best we can do? Is there something better? I've saved the city thousands of dollars on numerous contracts by asking questions. You have to be able to ask the right questions, and I have to do that every day with my own business. You know, you want to get the best deal for the city. And I think probably the last thing is, business is built on customer service. And as a, as a city council, who is your customer? The citizens who elected you. And so, your job is to bring those services and bring what your citizens need to them and listen to their needs. So, that's what I've learned in business, that's what I've done prior in the city council, and that's what I'll do again if the Arcadians reelect me.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Mr. Brink.
Thank you. I've been working with cities for 35 years when I started as a police explorer here in the city of Arcadia. And working with different cities, you've learned a lot of different ways of working things. One of the most important things is the respect. How do you talk to people? And how do you respond to people? It's very important to make sure that, as a council member, that you give people the proper respect and listen to what their concerns are because you do work for the residents of the city. The other thing is, is that you have to make sure that you are looking at everything that's going through or that you are to be approving or not approving. You have to look at the numbers, you have to make sure that everything is where it's supposed to be. I will be very tight-eyed on what is going on with our budget. This money is not my money, it is the taxpayers' money. And so, making sure that we keep that for our emergencies and it's being used properly would be the way to do it. I've been a board member for Police Officers Association of Los Angeles County for two years, and I've been working with them as a delegate for over five years. I've also been a chairman of a nonprofit charitable foundation, as well as board members for charitable foundations. We work with money, budgets, we work with hiring people and firing people. And again, it's all done with respect to make sure that everything is done properly and that we look, look at the money that's being spent, that it's being spent the way it should be spent for everyone. That is what you should be doing as a council member, and that is what I hope to be doing as a council member for the city of Arcadia.
Well, thank you, Mr. Brink, and thank you all. You've all been very succinct in your answers here, you've been very well-prepared. I think the city of Arcadia is fortunate to have such fine candidates as all of you. I think you all are a credit to the city, and you're bright people. And so, as an interviewer, I'm happy to see you and wish you all the best in the future for the city and in your own lives. Thank you very much. I'm Leonard Zane. Look for us next time.